Meeting to order. Okay, attendance minus Owen Von Flu, the six are here. And agenda review.
I move to approve the agenda as published.
Second.
Been moved in second to approve the agenda as published. All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it. Okay, discussion item number one, three A, superintendent goals.
Yeah, this is my first draft and you should have a link in your packet there. These are, I focused on the three areas that we identified during Derek's presentation. So fiscal management, organizational management, and communication. And so the first goal is around fiscal management. And you guys have already seen this one because this was in my board presentation on September 9th. So that one should be familiar. That's, you know, working with Kim and the admin team and Tony to create a balanced budget for 25, 26 that supports student achievement while still maintaining a $2 to $3 million in income balance. So that, that will be, you know, that'll be a challenge for us, but we are making lots of notes and lots of budget, we have lots of budget information going back and forth between Kim and I and Tony. And I think that we will have a good idea of what that will look like once the governor's budget comes out. So we're waiting anxiously for that, huh, Kim? The next goal is around organizational management. This goal was a little more difficult to write because I really think that upon reviewing the Division 22 standards, and those are, you can see in the body of this goal says they're the standards that districts must meet, and they contain requirements relating to curriculum, instruction, district policy, performance, accountability, human resources, and staffing. And a lot of, a lot of this area is difficult to write a goal around because it talks about professional development and some of the things that we normally would focus on in a traditional year, but this year we're kind of on coast in that area because it's difficult without additional funds to fund some of those activities. So I focused on the Division 22 compliance in this area. And so I would like to really try and hone in on where we need to make improvements. So one example would be equity. We're going to talk about that a little bit, about reestablishing the Equity Committee and creation of a policy team. And so we have our first meeting in October for that. And I'm really sorry, Josh, that that didn't meet your schedule very well. I'm trying to get it in before our next board meeting so that we can review. And I'm gone for a couple of days in October for a COSA presentation then. So anyway, the calendar is just very tight. And we will go through a really interesting process and I'll talk about that when I go over the policy section tonight. And so just Division 22, when you have an area that's non-compliant, you're required to craft a plan and how are you going to fix this and what's your timeline? And so it has a lot of those SMART goal components associated with it. And I will present that document to you at the November board meeting. And I think, you know, there's some areas that we need to work on. And I think it, you know, creates a good challenge for us through, through the year to try and become compliant in some of those areas. Some of these are going to be tough for us with some of the factors in our community. It's going to be tough. So we're going to have to massage our way through some of these. The next goal I have is around communication and community management. And for this particular goal, I have that I will actively collect stakeholder feedback through a variety of engagement sessions, surveys, and other methods that will help guide the district and create a sense of unity in our community. So part of the integrated plan through ODE, through all the grant, for all the grant funding that they give us for the Student Investment Account, High School Success, Early Literacy, all of those grant funds require that we have listening sessions and that we take community feedback. And so there'll be some surveys associated with those. We're starting to work on those. There will be a kind of a community forum where we're going to do an exercise with community members so that they can come in and tell us what they need, what they want, you know, what are we doing well and where do we need to do our work and what should we focus on? And I think taking that feedback from different, different sections of our community. So we're meeting with business, we're meeting with government, we're meeting with students, we're meeting with parents, staff members, and being really intentional about who we invite in to come talk about some of those things. And so that'll be an ongoing thing all year. You know, I've made a lot of connections already and joined Rotary and Chamber and, you know, I've had several meetings with the city. And so I think like, you know, trying to reach out YMC into the community and get a, you know, real heartbeat of what they need from us and how we should move forward. So that is what that goal is mostly about. And I think that that is really integral to building that trust that we've talked about and that transparency and, you know, really not listening to respond, but listening so that you can take it in and process it. Like what does that really mean to us as a district? And how do we respond to our community and their needs? And so I think that it's a good time to do some listening. And then support needed for those goals, attending the law conference. I just took an Oregon, a University of Oregon class for my doctorate in communication and education, and that was a super interesting class. And I've already completed that. Superintendent Funding Group, I sit on that group and we are recommending, and part of, part of the communication goal is that advocacy at the state level where you're, you know, working in a collaborative fashion to try and move the current service level up and not get them to delete any of the carve-out funding that we see. So we want them to leave the current service level at that higher amount plus HSS, plus SIA, plus Early Literacy, and not delete any of those separate boutique funds. But give us more in the general funds so that we can do, you know, what we need to do as a district. And then I'm also on the Women's Superintendent Executive Council, and I also attend the Women's Leadership Summit. So that's a great place to connect with some of these big hitters in the state. So that is the goal detail. Any questions?
No, I just like the way that you woaf your goals together with things that are already things we need to do. So you're not, you know, spreading yourself into things. So thank you very much for being super thoughtful about that.
Killed two birds, one stone.
That was my hope. We'll see if it works out that way.
I like the focus on three, but, but we had, there's, even though there's three separate, there's definitely more intertwined, like they mentioned a second ago. But I just appreciate the simplicity. These are easy to discuss and help, you know, you along the way and discuss with you and work with you on these. So I, I appreciate the focus on these for this year.
Thanks, sir.
Yeah. And there's a clear path.
Yeah, I hope it is a clear path for us. I think the budget work is really, you know, the most crucial part of this and how, how transparent we've been about, you know, our struggles when we've had a hard time and how we move forward. And we'll also have a very transparent process about, you know, if, if we do get better funding in the spring, like what do we prioritize to add back if we can add anything back? And hopefully we can. But, you know, we have some other, we have some outlined debt that we still need to take care of. So, you know, there'll be probably $500 to $1 million worth of debt that needs to go on the next biennium because there've been some discoveries, small discoveries, but they still, they add up. And we want to make sure that we, you know, get all those things in line. But I think we've got a good plan going forward. And, you know, we have to account for higher PERS costs. Those are going to go up in the next biennium. And, you know, we're going to bargain with licensed in the spring. And so just being really mindful about how transparent we are about what we need to manage and take care of because we have to, we have to start being more fiscally responsible with our funds. You know, that hasn't happened at our, I just, we just need to be, we have to take care of those things, so.
Kind of a side note with your support there, when you talk about the Superintendent Funding Group. I'm sure you guys talk about this already, but besides the boutique grants and things like that, but even in general, talking at the higher levels with mandates without funding attached to them, that leads to so many problems that no one, no one thinks of. The money that trickles down to the district level that has to be spent to meet the mandates that come down sometimes.
Yeah, we actually have a list. And once it's available for public release, I'll send it to you guys so you can see it. So that Superintendent Funding Group has, has created, you know, a definite, a definite talking point thing for superintendents to take with them throughout the state when they meet with legislators and talk about, you know, our, our situation and, and how precarious it's been, you know, especially related to facilities and some different things. So we have five really important talking points, then I'm going to give one secret away. Unfunded mandates is up near the top. Because in our, in our district and other districts, you know, for instance, Kim has $1.4 million on the unemployment insurance, you know, payout line. And Corvallis has a similarly high figure in that area too. And those were not things we anticipated. Additional costs with Senate Bill 819, those were things we didn't anticipate. And so having these unfunded mandates, and I did learn the most interesting thing at the superintendent's meeting on Thursday, and I didn't realize this because we just get a big list and, you know, but there are 319 places that superintendents are required to report to ODE. 319 reports that we have to send to ODE. So it's almost one a day. And that's not actually how it works. They're all kind of bunched up together. So that, I mean, that in, in and of itself is a huge problem, but that doesn't have to do with funding. But that does cost districts money because you have to.
Yeah, yeah. And again, it does cost.
It does cost, yeah. It's inadvertent, but it does cost money.
Well, and even beyond that too, the business office, you know, people don't love to see money spent in the business office. That's just they, they want it to be with kids. But because the way we fund education has changed so dramatically, you know, in the last decade, let's say with all the special funds, that it, you really need to keep your eye on more things. So that's, that's really hard.
Yeah, it is. I'm always like really nervous that we're going to miss one of those. Don't worry though, they usually remind us. We're getting close, so.
Anyone else have any comments for Kim? Okay, Policy Work Group.
Yeah, I mentioned that briefly. So Debbie's putting some great information together for us. So our, we, we scheduled about three hours for our first meeting. It's a pretty hefty meeting. We went through the summary that came from OSBA and most of the policies listed on there are either recommended, highly recommended, required, new, or delete. So there's a lot of work to be done in that, in that meeting. And, you know, we're going to like review the policy, look at what OSBA recommends, and then determine what our, what our recommendation is for the board. And that's a large team of, not large, but it's about about 10 people on it. And hopefully, you know, six to eight of them can make it every time. And we've got some administrators, several administrators on it. Couple of parents have been invited. We'll, we'll see if they join us. That's kind of fun. And so hopefully, you know, get some of those things updated. I know, like when I'm looking, like I'm seeing missing ARs sometimes where I think we should have an AR. And I'm keeping a list of those. Like we don't have a dress code AR. We have a dress code policy, but most people have an AR that accompanies that. And so like, you know, doing those, those adjustments and those upgrades so that we're consistent across the district is, is good to help unify us as a district.
Any questions for Kim?
No, just, just a comment. I think that'll be helpful for us as a, as a team, just on a more regular, consistent basis, be taking a deeper dive into some of the policies and unpacking them and having some robust conversations. So yeah, I saw the, the three hour meeting, but I think, I think it'll probably be needed for the first go. Not, not a bad thing. I think it's, depending on how many we need to work through and again, just for discussion. But yeah, I was happy to see it get set up.
Yeah, thanks. And I think, you know, once we're in that meeting and we start going through some of these, if we think we're really in a, in a precarious situation where we haven't updated things like, you know, that we need to, we can always do a desk audit with OSBA. It's about $12,000, but we won't have it in the budget for this year. We'd want to plan that for next year. So I have that in my budget list on my board, just in case we get deep into it and go, well, we probably, and then that goes category by category. So you start with A, B, and then you go to C. And that usually takes an entire year. So hopefully we can do it, you know, the way we plan without having to resort to that.
I think we did that in 2017.
Yeah, a lot of our policies are dated 2017, so I would bet you're right, Jen.
Three C, civil discourse.
Yeah, so you have a document in your packet tonight. It talks about what the high school plans as far as education for kids. So they've got a community message drafted, and they're actually working on kind of a, almost like an advertising campaign where they're working with the ASB kids to kind of talk about, you know, we have ways to talk about things and we can agree to disagree. And then I also have some other supporting documents that I'm going to share with administrators tomorrow. So we did find the, we had a really good manual from 2020 that Dan had put together that I didn't know existed until I saw Dan on Thursday. He's like, Kim, we need the manual. And I'm like, where would it be, Dan? In the Google, in the Google soup. So Debbie went in and found that. And we're adjusting that just slightly. It just needs a few tweaks and get that out to admin teams. And I think, you know, just really having those upfront transparent conversations with kids about what this should look like and what it shouldn't look like ahead of time. So really kind of training them on, on the do's and the don'ts, and same for staff. So we've been working on that. We should have that refined by early next week. And hopefully, you know, that's about a month out. You don't want to tell them too early because then they forget.
And so is that something that you will release to employees?
Yeah, we'll have a whole, like a whole packet, you know, basically a Google folder full of stuff that can be used for support, yeah, for staff and kids. Yep.
I like the letter. It's great. Good to be proactive on that.
Yeah, Patrick Mulligan wrote that letter, and it really is a good letter. We ran it by legal and they were like, wow, I wouldn't change a single word, ancoms. So he got really high. He got an A+ on it. And then they have a script. I didn't include the script for you because it made it confusing, but they have like a script where they're kind of talking through some different points and they're probably, you know, they're filming it and doing some different things. So I, I, we could probably show you that when it's done, but I'll try and send it to you guys when KJ gets that together. Any questions on that?
Not on that document. The next one, the PDF.
Which one, Josh?
You attached a fairly large, well, eight-page PDF, Where Every Student Thrives, or sorry, Internal Use, School District Staff. This is that policy, Social Political Guidance Manual. That's what I'm looking at right now.
Yeah, okay. Yeah, I've got it printed right here. Yeah.
And did we just come up with that over the last couple of weeks?
No, this is Dan's document from 2020. That's the one I was referencing earlier that he asked me to find. Yeah.
Perfect.
Yeah, and so Debbie updated that today. And so we'll share that with the admin team tomorrow. Yeah.
Okay. The only thing that I, I think it's great, the letter's great. I think we're heading it off great, but where the work's really going to be done is the staff that would catch these kids in the moment of like them trying to act cool or saying something cool and just kind of correct it. Come on now, dude, we can do better. So I think that's how it's going to go. Like, Pete, did you really have to? Come on, man. Oh, I'm sorry, you know? I think that's where it's really going to come down. The teachers are the ones being political, which I don't think they will be. But if you got a couple, then that just creates the chaos. So I really hope in the staff, it can lead by example and then the students can follow in their, in their example.
Yeah, we did talk, we talked to union leaders about that at our last union meeting too, about the, you know, the importance of remaining neutral and not, you know, instigating or, you know, prodding or poking anybody. It is a delicate, I mean, you know, kids are really passionate about this sometimes. And so I remember when, it wasn't the 2020 election, it was 2016. That was really, I worked in Jervis that year and that was really difficult over there. It was, I mean, there was a lot of jabbering back and forth. And so, you know, I mean, nothing really serious, but I think that, you know, trying to get kids to, if you're not teaching about that subject, if you're not teaching government, political science, or, you know, or history, or, or one of those related topics, it's probably not something you should dive into as a teacher unless you've got good experience with that. And we also talked to union leaders about that, you know, about kind of trying to tiptoe around it a little bit. I mean, you should always teach kids how to have that civil discourse and be able to talk about things. Because we all don't, just, we all don't agree on everything that we talk about in here, but we can agree to disagree and come to a consensus based on what we know is right for kids, even though, I mean, like sometimes there are times when I don't agree with everything that we're doing in the district, but sometimes I have to go along with a majority viewpoint that, that maybe doesn't necessarily match my viewpoint. But I think it's good to teach kids that. That skill's important, even though we kind of tried to avoid it for a while in our, in our world, so.
Do you have, maybe I missed, I, I, I did try to read it before the meeting, but is there guidance on when, like in the past, there's been like rallies in the parking lot? And that's not in the school ground? So you can kind of do whatever you want? Is there clear guidance so they can tell the students, this is what, you know, out there, or this is the area you can do when you want, whenever, but within other bounds? But for instance, you know, activities that you can do in the parking lot that you can't bring into the lunchroom, so to speak?
Yeah, I think they're talking about that as a staff. And I think that, you know, I think if it doesn't disrupt the educational environment, I mean, like you could have students out by the flagpole protesting. If they're not, if they're not skipping class and disrupting the whole environment, then, you know, you, they have the right to have free speech. But the moment they start, we have to be able to maintain order in the school system. And so once order is disrupted, then you have to, then you have to shut it down.
I mean, yeah, yeah. I mean, like one of the things about, you know, that term free speech is getting kind of worn down for me. I like, it's, 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 because that's usually associated with someone just saying something stupid and ridiculous. You know, I have a right to be a whatever, fly a swastika, you know, whatever. But, you know, I wish it would be like more like we, we'd have like talk about the free expression. How, I wish we could teach our kids how to freely express their ideas. Because that means there's thought behind it. And, and how that, that having a rally somewhere, like out in the parking lot, at the flagpole, at the park, and gathering a crowd, doing a good job, and encouraging people to stop and listen, and in a way that passersby engage with what you're doing in a positive way that might bring them to your side versus what too often I see on all sides right now in, in our public is where they, they try to, you know, stop traffic or, or capture a space. You have the right to speak freely in the public space and gather a crowd, but you do not have the right to take over a captured audience and then demand and make them listen. Kind of a thing like, you know, so what you can do in the parking lot, because people can engage with you or not.
Right.
But you don't get to do it in the lunchroom where people have got to have lunch.
Right, yeah. Again, that's a disruption to the environment. We also have policy, our Every Student Belongs policy talks about, you know, hate speech and how, how there, there are certain symbols of hate that aren't allowed inside the school building. So the Confederate flag, the noose, the swastika. And, you know, when I taught, I taught a First Amendment lesson when I was teaching US history. And one of the things I talked about was like, let's not be hateful, right? Like, like free speech shouldn't include things that are hateful or derogatory towards other people. And I think that's important to remember is that we're not here to drag anybody down and people can have their own opinions. It doesn't mean they're wrong. It doesn't mean, you know, they're not worthy of respect. And I think just teaching kids those things is really important. Now, will we still maybe have a problem? I hope not. I'm going to go in and talk to the leadership kids and hop in there and say, hey, you know, help us, help us, help kids do the right thing. Because they have a lot of pull inside the building, so.
It's tough at that age to have kids learn because it's something I'm still actively learning and working on. Just because somebody thinks differently than you doesn't mean they have a problem with you. Their ideas are just different. It's not a personal attack. Maybe we could learn something here. Maybe I'm wrong. It's something we don't ask ourselves enough. So I hope, and I think this is a great step. I think we've set up all the, the boundaries that we need to. And I think us as a board have done a good job of operating well from this and not getting involved in that either because it's our leadership. It's important too. So I think we're doing a good job of that. So thank you, Kim.
You're welcome. Yeah, they are, the kids are watching us all the time. And they do emulate, you know, what kind of, what kind of lead we give. So, you know, what we're giving them is the ability to have that civil conversation. And I think as you get older, I mean, I know I met my viewpoints have mellowed as I got older. Maybe it's because I'm a superintendent. I have to put myself into the center all the time. Like I, you know, I have to get into the middle to try and help everyone, you know, be unified and together. But I think teaching kids a little more, you know, they're, they're, they're very passionate when they're young. And, you know, as you, as you weather a little bit, that, you know, that wears off a little bit. But we'll try and, we'll try and keep them in a positive light. And I think these are great kids and I think, you know, that they will have an appropriate response.
Well, and the important part is, and I know our educators do this, it's, it's, you know, the old adage, teaching them how to think, not what to think.
Yeah.
And so that's, that's key. Okay. Anything else on civil discourse?
When's that all taking place? As far as, I guess it's now, right?
Yeah, they're working on it right now, so I don't know when the release will be. I, I'll check with KJ tomorrow and let you guys know.
It's hard to believe that it's like 40-ish days away.
Yeah, about 40, yeah.
Okay, Equity Team.
Yeah, so on the Equity Team Agenda section, there is a giant document which talks about establishing district Equity Committees based on Senate Bill 732. And then I included our Equity Policy, so you could see it, that was adopted in 2020. We're required to have an Equity Team in place and we don't in the district. And I think that, you know, some of the ways to bring the community together is by having, having these discussions and making sure that we have a welcoming, inclusive environment for everybody. I think that's really important. And so I think that reestablishing that team is, it's on our Division 22 standards. It's one of the areas we're not compliant in. And I would like to be able to say I'm compliant in this area. And there's been, there's a lot of interest in the community. I was approached a couple of times when I was at an event on, oh, it was last week. I went to the Sheltering Silver Ten fundraiser, and I was approached by two different people and said, hey, Kim, is the Equity Team coming back? And I said, yeah. And so they're very excited and volunteered to serve on it. And so I've got some information on the old team who was on it. So I think we're mostly ready to go and we'll put that together soon. And hopefully we can get that off the ground and have it meet, you know, soon.
So I have a question about something you just said. You said, so to my knowledge, we don't have to have a first convening of the committee until September 15th, 2025. And there's other timelines. So I don't think we're out of policy yet. I think we're behind organizing it by law.
No, we're out of policy for districts our size. It's based on your size.
10,000 students.
Oh, maybe it, I thought it was, I thought it was less than that.
10,000.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah. I haven't read it in a while. It's been a couple of years. Or a year, at least.
It's a page four, under requirement. So districts with an average daily membership of 10,000 or less are required to first convene a district Equity Committee by September 15th, 2025.
Okay, so we're not technically out of compliance. That's great. Yeah, I just, I, I remembered the old day because I, just other people are doing it, so. I stand corrected. Sorry about that.
No, it's fine. I was, I actually was originally thinking we didn't have to, and then I saw in the original bill, but then they had the cutout for districts of our size and their deadline associated with it. So you're not wrong.
Yeah, it looked like the ones of 10,000 or more was 2015, 2020, or sorry, 2022.
2022, I think, yeah.
Kim, do we anticipate? Kim, do we anticipate any associated costs? Obviously that's, granted, we have to do what the law says, but it's kind of the new question I was asked. Is there any associated costs?
I don't think there's really any associated costs with it. I think that it's just a district equity committee team. And I think, I think it will be relatively cost free for now unless we end up bribing people with some snacks or something.
They did ask that that be done as a recommendation of basically funding the committee of some sort, including translators? I was like, like, okay, well, can we afford some of these things?
Yeah, we could use Yolanda for the translation. Yeah, that would be, or we could just put her on the team. She'd be good to have on there because she runs our McKinney-Bento. She's our community liaison anyway, she'd be great to have on that team.
Yeah, and great, maybe recruiting people that would be useful.
Yeah, totally, yeah. So I, I haven't really got too far into it. I did talk to, I sent an email to Jen Hannan because she was on it previously to see if she was interested in serving on it again. So I'm starting to reach out to people that were on it previously to see. Yeah, so this is a, not as, not, not going to happen as quickly as the policy. But I did just want to run it by you that it is required.
I'll, I haven't, I've only kind of taken a periphery dive. I'll take a little deeper dive. But once the committee's up and running, recommendations to the district? Or what is, what's the next step? Once the committee is up and running, what does the participation look like? Is advisory or?
Yeah, I think it's more of an advisory committee. And I think, I think we would use it during our integrated planning process. So there's a, there's an equity statement that's required for the integrated plan through ODE. And we have an equity statement, but it, it also might be good to revise that or just take a look at it and make sure it's good and current. The other thing is when we start doing a strategic plan, this would be a great team to have, look at some different components of our strategic plan. And, you know, really create that, that lens of equity of how we look at what we're doing in the district. And are we serving all of our groups of folks that need our help? And how are we doing that? And what do those focal groups look like in the district? And how do we best serve all of our students and clients?
And SIA requires those focal groups too, right?
Right.
Yeah, SIA requires the focal groups. And then a lot of times, like if you have a targeted school for improvement, the focal groups are, are sometimes where that improvement needs to happen. So, you know, maybe your ELD students didn't make as much progress as they should have or your students on an IEP, like they look at those different groups and, and they tell you whether or not, you know, you should spend more time and effort in one of those.
I have one last clarifying question, sorry, Kim.
No, you're good.
This comes off of just a page 25 and it's a requirement. And some of the recommendations, I already think that our district already does really good. I think a lot of our policy already encompasses one of our strategic goals, which is inclusion and equity into all students into our district. Like I think like we drew have really good frameworks on following these rules. The one that's interesting is on 25, it's like, I'm trying to understand this, that the, the DEC committee members are supposed to be, to participate in means included, but not only to access to district managed emails. And I'm like, I don't quite, and relevant public meetings and security trainings. And I'm like, trying to understand, do they, what does that mean? Where they get access to district managed emails?
Like they have an account, maybe?
Yeah, they have an email account. Yeah, they're set up with an account.
They don't have access.
That we've ever had, whether it was on LFRP or Bond Advisory Committee, never had that. So, now granted, that wasn't a required committee by law, but long range facility was in order to get a bond. So I'm just kind of like trying to understand it a little bit. But if that's what they mean, then that's what we have to do. And then security trainings? I don't even think we have security training as board members.
Maybe we can do those as a large group. Yeah, and I, it might mean, yeah, I'd have to reread this. It's been a while since I've gone clear through this. Yeah, if you want to forward some more detailed questions to me, that would be great. And I don't have this whole document memorized.
No, I just read it all.
It seems kind of strange to me. And I, you know, I think most of the people that are on here will probably already have a district email, so.
Okay.
Yeah. We'll ask Brad about that and see.
And this is guidance too, right?
This is guidance, so you don't have to follow it word for word. I think it's.
Yeah, they have specific things that are said requirements.
Yeah, and recommendations.
And then others are recommendations or guidance. Okay. Well, is there anything else on that topic from the board or from Kim? Well, that has it.
All right.
We are adjourned.
We're set in.